We're down to the administrator for your court, that's page forty-two on your I-ten.
I'm being on a couple of projects, so we can have our first day request for generator project. Contact her is finished installation in the concrete that'll do over the next couple of weeks. Spec generator for right by August for installation. They have all the underground conduit completed. Climber switch here, it's in place and full of wire and any other connections, so we're human long. That base there, yeah, that's around the two hundred eighty KW units. And that's designed to run, run the entire building area inside of our phone systems and computer systems. And once we get that active, we'll do some testing, we'll double check the quality of the electricity and we're always worried when we place those things online, especially with computer systems. Running the pickups there, so we will proceed with costing if that, but we definitely have to test it. So if we want into a situation, we have a few months ago, then we know we can operate the whole building. For USDA emergency water shed protection program, we have Mr. Taurus out this morning with USDA representatives. The state police was very gracious, spoke with OEM's contact there to fly sturgeon watershed, most of it, and mostly a little black, not too late, but watershed. And we went through the videos and tried to identify areas where we see debris next year structures, primary infrastructure, the bridges and culverts that could be washed out in a hundred year storm event, if you have storm debris that fell into the watershed, got washed downstream and backed up against those structures, they would, of course, erode the banks. Take maybe take out roads or, or building, so USDA has assigned at least three people to, to look at that. We also Eagles here today to give some guidance on how they'll look at any project that may be through as far as what kind of permitting needs to be done and what's actually be done and and the water courses themselves, so hopefully we'll get a little bit of guidance there. You know, there's definitely debris. There's, I guess, I guess it'd be in my opinion, not, not as much as you might expect in in the watersheds, but there, there is definitely some debris. We'll take tho- that information, sure it's municipalities within those jurisdictions and talk to them about that. And try to, try to see if anything will be eligible for our training today. And this would be a seventy-five percent USDA grant funding. We talked to the municipal minutes to split the costs and then also recount what have, have a portion of that if the board proves at the end of the day. So we ain't working on it, the window is closing, the time period, time is are very tight. We got about another thirty days to get that accomplished as far as identification and then place a number on it that USDA staff is comfortable and if they give a thumbs up on that, then we can proceed forward with whatever the next step would be probably a formal complete application. So that's where we stand on that project.
Question? Comments?
Just one, a quick one on phase one county building window door replacement, so we need to ask site op group, which has done a couple of our past projects in the building here, give us a quote for architectural engineering services to give us a specification to put out a good packet even for replacement of some windows and doors, let's start with the horsary area here between that and a couple, couple of the windows in the front that are not part of the curtain wall. Curtain wall project will have to be a separate, no. In the future, we will actually remove the whole front of the building off, have to have temporary walls. So the usual, this phase would complete the the windows in the original section, which would nineteen sixty-eight windows that were redone sometime in the eighties with pains, will take, take out the, the whole window replace. So we've had that completed and circuit work. And so, you know, see what that looks like, you can look at, look at that window. You want birth, recently with today's window glass and also the paintings themselves and so it's much higher quality than that. We'll have that contract agreement on the next, next board agenda for through walls like that.
So a lot of this is on maintenance plan, it was developed quite a few years ago, it's continually being updated, so. Any questions? Moving on. The whole business moving on to new business tent fairground event, I mean forty-three in right now.
For area twenty-five, plastic tractor and flung certification fall festival. This will be the second year for the event, the first festival was last fall, they, they have tractors and flung equipment and a lot of activities for, for youth during that program. So for October tenth to eleventh. Initial on the ninth for setup and then tear down on the twelfth, recommendations for approval. I'll make the nation, Mr. Taurus.
Sport, sir. Thank you, yeah.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes. Thank you, that's thirty-seven, oh, one. We're down to D probably foreclosed the first right of the few, that's fifty.
Good morning.
Hello. How are you, Buck?
Good, how are you?
Yeah, thank you.
Good to see all of you.
Better to be seen and viewed.
We have eighteen foreclosed properties this year. First, they are available to the state, the local unit and the county. Most of them are vacant, two of them are abandoned houses and then a couple of them have dilapidated structures on me. These parcels can be purchased for minimum bid unless there is a claim. A claim would increase the price to fair market value, which is two times the assessed value. Any governmental unit can purchase from the auction. And then this way, it does not deprive a former owner of that proceeding. We have zero claims so far. And those are due by July first. So my recommendation is to waive first right refusal, so all eighteen parcels can be sold at auction and remain on the tax roll. Any question?
What's the cumulative value of? Do you have a chance to do?
So if you look at, I think, page fifty-two. Yes. So the current assessed value on all eighteen parcels would be one forty-eight one. So, two times the assessed value, two hundred ninety-six thousand two hundred, that'd be possible sales. Less, less the taxes due of twenty-four thousand, and we're looking at two hundred and seventy-two thousand one hundred dollars on the proceeds. Of which we only get to keep the five percent.
Sure.
So that's about thirteen thousand.
Thank you, that's a, it's a good summation.
Is eighteen a low number for number of full deliveries compared to three years?
We worked hard to, to get it to eighteen here, last year we had fourteen, so we're always trying to be the last number, last low number, yeah, twenty-twenty-three at twenty-six parcels. So I, I think eighteen is too good.
I made the motion, authorize chair sign and make way of first right refusal, that part is for treasury recognition.
And support, I'll support that, thank you, Tom, moving supporting, and party.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yeah.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes. Thank you, seven, oh.
Thank you.
Thanks, Buck. We're down to C and C tax rate request for something that's, I mean fifty-four on my day.
Yep, this is our request of summer levy is allocated on twelve forty from that recommendation. Mr. Eustace probably explain this better, right?
Well, it went a little bit for twenty-four, really. Yeah, he did because of that.
Yep, and we did have, and we rolled back this year, we've been back for the last several years.
I'll make the most known up for us, usually twenty-twenty-five, that's, I mean, as a sugar.
Thank you, that's the part, the word, with that, thanks, man.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes. Thank you, I also carried seven, we're down to D, and then probably for the master planning of fifty-seven.
Yep, we received a grant from the state of Michigan, which has to have a holding components to complete our master plan. We thought working your regional, for the Michigan council governments to supply consulting service for us. And this is the agreement, you know, almost forty-six thousand and eighty dollars with our services to help. With the documents, we'll actually, you know, put the document together, work with the planning commission. It's for using, doing any type of policy analysis, we'll have several public hearings during the process with the staff, NEMCO staff and the, and the planning commission, both of you guys to review, plan, and plan policies being set. Now, this process will take approximately a couple of years to, to ensure. So our recommendation was to motion approve proposal, plus the Michigan council of governments, complete the master plan paying an amount of forty-six thousand eight hundred and eighty dollars, author of the chair of signing and authorizing necessary budget adjustment.
Mr. Chairman, I make that, all right, continue with the proplating, support, I'll support it, thank you, Eustace.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yeah.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes. So that's carrying seven. We're down to Penny Ward, self-help center man, I'm not sure what that's about.
For fiscal twenty-five, the courts received eighty-eight hundred dollar award to set up a pre-cutter basically in the law library series, so the public has access to online materials if they want to represent themselves, and we don't offer any kind of legal advice, anything that's just available, and this is just a request for six hundred dollars in the fiscal twenty-six to pay for the paper supplies. So their recommendation is to approve the submission of the fiscal twenty-six self-help center grant application in the amount of fifteen-six hundred dollars. Authorize the finance director to accept the word electronically on behalf of the chair of awarded and allow any necessary budget adjustments.
Thank you, sir. So, thanks, guys, I'll support. Adam Clay.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes. Thank you, man, for just carrying seven, we're down to ten F, child and current legal representation, seventy-four in right now.
This is a grant that probably court receives every year that helps supplement the money that we pay to our legal people that help with legal legal representation for human rights entities. The state basically awards an amount of fifteen thousand eight hundred and seventy dollars that we reverse and we can't set plan with ninety-four thousand contract that we already have with our attorneys, so it's an addition, additional money for them that we can provide. Their recommendation is to ratify the submitted Michigan Department of Health and Human Services title of court, a child and parent legal representation grant application for fiscal year twenty-six. Authorize the grant to be signed electronically by the private court register, family court administrator on behalf of the chair, authorized official as well as our future forthcoming documentation and authorize any necessary budget adjustments.
Pleasure, board. Over to Ben, thank you, Dale. Sir Boris, thank you.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes. That's carried seven. At the board, we're down to G, generator project stands electric.
As the administrator had mentioned, this is the first draw she has electric is making on the generator project, eating on the fifty-five thousand. Since it was over the twenty-five thousand dollar one that staff has, we requesting that the board read that eighty-five thousand now a draw, we request this in a block.
I'll support, thank you, Tom, both are supporting.
Commissioner, Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes. Thank you, board, that's carried seven. And down to ten, eight salary and wage residence. Eighty-nine on my panel.
Staff is requesting the amount of salary of the accounting position from twenty-three forty-one an hour to a range of twenty-three forty-one to twenty-six twelve per hour per equipment and market adjustments. This position has been dated for the past two years and staff is looking to fill it. The twenty-six twelve is the rate that the current accountants in other position has and they would allow flexibility to make up to that, I'm not sure. I did interviews last week and I'm looking at an offer this week and I'm not sure that I need to have it go that high, but I don't want to wait till July, even if I have to.
Commissioner Ostman?
Yes.
Commissioner Sangster?
Yes.
Commissioner Newman?
Yes.
Commissioner Eustace?
Yes.
Commissioner Claremont?
Yes.
Commissioner Wallace?
Yes.
Commissioner Warfield?
Yes.
Okay, that's carried, that's just, some more evidence that we're not competitive with him accounting and not single counting, against the wages for
in a couple areas, and then we will catch up. And most of them. Down to board members for discussion, things been bothering me and I, I've had the response of, I'm getting them, it's a maligned station. They're hard, have a hard time in COVID, or getting variance, they gave variant eighty-five-nine or eighty-six dollars a month to do that kind of work, and I think that's, that's that's why we're having a harder time finding. But I think we, conversation, of course, we need to find ways to somehow increase that to something more representative of what the actual cost is. So, Mr. Chair, so.
I'm getting a lot of state or state office, I don't know.
I'm not sure. That's all I have, administrator. Administrator of the money. Anybody else, everything?
I, I would like to talk about the the issues that were brought up. The administrator and I had a conversation yesterday about it. This was brought up at Fuller Town show a couple of months back, but in talking with Jeff to, I'll, I'll let you go with Jeff, because they know I was too.
For the gravel operation?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, I think there's been maybe some, some area discussion, one of the mission members here about gravel operations, if we look back in times in the state of Michigan even going back twenty years, there's been a lot of discussions between local control and of course plans to taking control, so where we stand right now I would say they're still in the local control time and, but there's, there's always legislation put forward, a lot of times closed away in dungeons sessions and tries to take local control away from gravel operations, maybe similar to like the solar after infillable processes, say. So with, with that being said, the, I'm not a hundred percent familiar with the, the ordinance use that we refer to. We have to get copies of those to research. I will state generally outside zoning ordinance, there's a few other ordinances and county governments do not have the same authority as city, village, townships for ordinance level. So we would have the review to see if this is a ordinance level that is at the city township, village level versus the county or county candidate industry zoning ordinance, which has land use control, typically special use provisions. But those, these file ordinances, those, those would rest with the basements, the alley in the city, the township, I know have authority at that level, so I'd have to research that to see what level this is and ask staff and planning commission, what kind of conversations have been you know, occurred at that level and it's likely to work itself into the master plan, discuss them. A lot of those topics is something during that process, but hopefully I can use the staff to help with gravel, gravel line and where regulation might make it occur or not occur.
Clear comments could be made, so we could change from a criminal, which still is, as far as forward, so, so the use. He changed that as a state law, but sure, is that a total?
No, most of this, now this happened, you know, probably in the early two thousands, the we know the planning, there's asked that we looked at. What our legal counsel will tell us is that the threshold to prove a civil infraction is much, much smaller than a criminal. Usually you can plant his own for those levels, then you're trying to get compliance. And I mean, misdemeanor was a much tougher way to go into court to get approved of, the cost is very expensive. So I'm pretty, it's very confident that our legal counsel would say that you should start, start with civil infractions we have. There may be ways to exercise that our ordinance actually has a progressive system. And you can look at the fines that are set up there, it doesn't the, the court can still make a ruling for compliance, and I think that's probably where the discussion is to be held. As if you go in, let's say, you know, first fine was a hundred dollars and they get compliance and have to write a second ticket for two hundred dollars. The court, the judge has the discretion to issue compliance under that, the fine plus that, so it's still rest for the court itself, doesn't make it a criminal offense at the end of the day. Also, might be a possibility, I don't know if our attorneys would, would recommend this, is it's they have to do research to see, make sure it's legal, there could be a, I guess, graduating process where you have the, the first two maybe cases with similar fractions and if somebody gets to a third or a fourth level offense in a certain amount of time, I think they may be able to switch over to that. But we definitely have to have legal counsel research. They're very confident, they would not recommend right off of that, changing that. I don't, I don't know, there are many municipalities that still have criminal damages that happened in the early two thousands. Those fact issue on compliance, the proof of, and courts have, you know, a rule, there can also be a jury trial. Ultimately, although it is enforcement, there is also a cost to that, two different tracks are much different.
So the, how the government is made as far as force option, I'm just not familiar with that is that? For instance, in the, would you enforce motion, be a state option, EPA, an equal, or is it a county?
I'm not familiar specifically with you know, that potential violation there. If it's a violation of the special use permit, our, our planning zone department would be made aware of that, so we have, you know, obviously there's a risk of people violating that. Once we're aware of it, then they can build into, to address it or get a letter to violate a special permit how to comply, if they didn't comply, I think it would be of that civil infraction enforcement and go through that process there. It's potential with the gravel pit operation, they could have wetland violations, that could be evil issues, they could have soil sedimentation, which is also the element to the US state jurisdiction, the issues there and the so it's.
So if the constituent believe that there was a violation, who would be the first set? Through our planning zone or would he to report to either?
Well, either one, but it's, they would, they would want to call us if they felt there was a kind of violation, we really need to look at that. We might not necessarily hear from legal, if there's a complaint made at the state level, we don't always get notified and reverse any potential there. We threat tell staff if we, we have a notice violation, we think there's a violation at state level, we do that forward. So I, I would recommend that they, they report it, so it can be investigated, that it is an actual violation or not.
Thank you. As far as I know, you know, the state has a lot of control over the money.
Yeah, that was my assumption, you know, like, to somebody, and that's why I want to clarify, because I think the, to certain, certain and just don't know what could, the recourse is now, but thank you, Jim.
Any, any changes? Citizens comments, Louis, number two. I mean, your second.
The recent briefcase of are we convening ourselves with not providing cooling shoulders for people? I mean, what, that's a high thing, the, the public is get a clarification guidelines from the county, from all the, what the criteria can be for opening up cooling shoulders for people. Because you got people who, you don't have DCs, which not a four-day, a day-feet. And, you know, get them out of the elements, that's public health and safety function of our government here that we need to take, take care of the people here. I mean, is it going to be, once a heat advisory is issued then are we going to get a, a heavy OEM model, open up our county buildings, county facilities? If it gets greater than right, do we provide transportation for people? Do we, do we share it for, for right transportation for people? I mean, what is the county? What is the county guidelines on this? It seems like every time It was seemed like every town bringing us up, there's really not much of a good answer that I think the county public deserves. On excessive heat, just like in warming shoulders coming here, this, this ice storm. You know, I said, almost published, they're supposed to be at the El Breno Fire Hall. They go there, signs is probably across street at Ben John Chapel. You know. There's a lot of balls being dropped. A lot of.
What they do down south, it was, it's so warm all year round.
They have, they have the places open. They have things open. They have ways of getting people to, you know, do the facilities. I mean, you know, we should be no different. I mean, you know, your jobs are to, you know, to be here for the, the public and be protect their health, safety and well-being. So, and I think that, you know, we do need, you know, especially with the last seven, three days, it should have had this county building that has AC in it. Should have originally right or run correct around the house, get people to bring them over, bring them in here during the day hours. To, you know, be out of the heat. I mean, at least, that's the least we can do as a, as a county.
You, you look into that, see if what we have is responsible for that kind of thing.
Or see the US.
Thank you.
You know, we can't be going through.
Thank you.
At least any place this year.
Yeah, we, we used to have the ice house. Anyone else? Board member comments?
I've none.
We're all set. How about a motion to adjourn and follow this in? Just a reminder, you're all you're at in reality are in. How about a motion to adjourn?